Number 17, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to order. A roll call. Mike Holden.
Here.
Tony Corpi.
Here.
Terry Murray.
Here.
Roxanne Scovest-Deeche. Michelle Hebner, here. Heather McBride.
Here.
Ted Saxton.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Ella Barra-Jeffries. Could we please stand for the flag of the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, open forum. Anyone for public open forum.
I got a mistake already.
I know. We're gonna approve the agenda.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve this last, the agenda from what?
The agenda, there were four updates today.
Yeah, as amended.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. If someone's not looking at electronic version four here, and I'll talk to them, but that's, that's the adjustment.
Yep. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. And still no one for public open forum. Consent agenda items. Item one, approve past meeting minutes for the regular school board meeting of August 20th, 2018. Approve current accounts payable due in the amount of $1,42,960.70. Approve pay, item three, approve payroll in the amount of $490,623 for pay periods August 31st to September 14th. Item four, second reading of school board policy 413 harassment and violence. Item five, approve the district's rest break and meal break policy. Item six, approve hire of Ariana Cipriano as varsity knowledgeable advisor for the 2018-19 season. Item seven, approve hire of Casey Cujo.
Cuila.
Cualia? Okay, as junior varsity knowledgeable advisor for the 2018-19 season. Approve hire of Josh Sobkowitz, assistant boys swimming coach for the 2018-19 season. Approve hire of Aaron Russo and Beth Latinsky as prom advisors for the 18-19 prom. Item 10, acknowledge the following volunteer football coaches for 2018-2018 season. Seth Yornrood, Cody Callen, and Jacob Edisted. Item 11, acknowledge Jessica Elman as volunteer girls swim dive coach for the 2018-2018 season. Item 12, approve the 2017-2018 PSU agreement with Masabi Range College. Item 13, approve the 2018-2019 PSU agreement with Masabi Range College. Item 14, accept resignation of Sandra Jean Paraprofessional effective September 25th, 2018. Item 15, accept resignation of Jerry Bolstead as girls hockey head coach for the 2018-19 season effective immediately. Item 16, approve the joint powers agreement with the City of Arizona National Falls to operate the Recreation Commission. Item 17, second reading of school board policy 102, equal education opportunity. Item 18, second reading of school board policy 205, open meetings and closed meetings. Item 19, second reading of school board policy 401, equal employment opportunity. Item 20, second reading of school board policy 206, public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings, and data privacy considerations. Item 21, first reading of school board policy 525, violence prevention. Item 22, first reading of school board policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students. Item 23, first reading of school board policy 419, tobacco-free environment. Item 24, first reading of school board policy 421, gifts to employees and school board members. Item 25, first reading of school board policy 504, student dress and appearance. Item 26, first reading of school board policy 723, stock epinephrine. Item 27, approve hire of John Reller as paraprofessional with start date of 9/4/2018. Item 28, approve hire of Chelsea Nagel as a paraprofessional with start date of 9/4/2018. Item 29, approve hire of Ashley Larson as a paraprofessional with start date of 9/4/2018. Item 30, approve hire of Elizabeth Brummett as a paraprofessional with start date of 9/4/2018. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda items as presented?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
If I can just make a few comments here. Number five is new and where this came from, and it's actually not a MSD policy, is our teacher's contract lays out kind of what a, I'm gonna say, a salary teacher has for a lunch break and what the expectations are. Our parent contract as well as 510 contract does not. So the question of does a custodian, I'm just picking on someone, have a 30-minute lunch or 45-minute lunch? Is it, you know, some are paid and some are not. We work with the crews. For instance, some of the secretaries want a paid lunch and others don't. We work with them, but there's nothing in there. So what we're trying to do and the same with breaks, there's laws on what you have to do when you have to give a person a break, up to how long. We're trying to lay that out here so it is clear, so that, you know, this is the expectation. So that if a group is taking 45, 50-minute lunch, breaks, paid, hang on here, you know? No, this, because we don't have it written anywhere, so that's, there's been a little, I'm not gonna say misuse, but I think it's growing. And so I talked with June, I let her know it was coming, and again, not blaming, they get it scheduled for the most part. Like I talked to Cal as well, letting him know where this was coming from. Have not done a lot of, you know, feedback, because they're entitled to certain things, but at least it's laid out. And if it's not working, we'll deal with it. And so that's where that's coming from. Just so you're aware, on six and seven, those two have worked this out to split that. In the past, for knowledgeable, Carol Jackson did them both. They wanted to do one junior high, one varsity, so that's where that's coming from. Number 12 is printed correctly. We ran into an issue, and it comes with our Mars reporting of students. We had, I think it was five kids taking, I'm gonna call it EMT course at the city hall or ambulance training last winter sometime. They worked with Mr. Iverson to make sure, because they can get credit for it. The conversation never came up, how was Masabi gonna charge us or were they just gonna charge the state? Like with Rainy River, we have a contract, so we have kids taking courses each year. We claim all the kids and then they send us a bill. Well, what happened is it never came up. And so Masabi claimed the kids, which means we can't. Two places can't claim the kids. So we had to work with them. They asked us to get a contract back, you know, in place for last year. We dated it as of this year, and we're going back and fixing it. That's where it's coming from. We also had two kids that we didn't know about that went online and took calculus from. So something we had no idea, and so it still should've came up as a conversation. Notice we're also putting it in place for this year, just in case something comes up. It's not one, these aren't the ALI courses or concurrent enrollment that we offer. This is post-secondary. So that is correct. I thought someone would go, you're wrong, and you're right. No, it is last year. Mr. Bolstead, I would just, and again, there's another resignation, obviously. Like to thank people that have worked for us. I think Mr. Bolstead's done a superb job for many years with the girls hockey. And I don't see this resignation why or what's going on. We have posters starting today internally to try giving a replacement. It'll go external as well. Number 16 is coming back to us, and I don't know if Mike or Ted would, I think you guys. But there's a new sign up. For the most part, I support the agreement. It's worked well. There was just some, I'm gonna say clarifying language, that the city felt needed to be in there. Twenty-six, just so you're aware, twenty-six is new policy. It'll come back next month as well. But that's allowing us to have, there is, I mean, if you read the whole policy, there is law to allow us to have stock Epi pens on, for, and I'm using elementary as an example. There's a lot of kids that haven't been stung by, you know, or something like that. If something happened, at least we have something. There's a law that protects us just like anyone else. You know, if we're err on the side of using it, and we'll have them in both buildings. It's just at the high school more often, you know, kids that need, but I think that's all I was gonna mention. Yeah.
Kevin, I just had a question on the accounts payable. The credit card purchases that were listed, it says see attached details, but there was no, there was no attachment to it.
What's that?
Okay, I just wasn't sure if I missed it somewhere or.
I'm guessing it's not attached. We can get it out to you. I would say go for it. If someone has an issue with it, we will bring it up, just like these, if that's okay. Because we can't, yeah. We'll shoot it out, we'll get it attached. If anyone has an issue or question on any of them, let us know. Legally, we're bound to kind of pay them. You know, lessons, not ours type deal. Sorry.
I just wonder if I missed it somewhere.
Just for that joint powers agreement, I think I mentioned it last time, but it was just, the whole, all the revisions basically take specific numbers out of it and make it percentages and stuff like that. So it can, it doesn't need to be updated next time we have a referendum. And that was part of the update. It's essentially the exact same document.
Anything else? All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. And we got action items. Number one is a resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to district. Whereas International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goal objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states, the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public Schools ISC 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by a school district. District's donation is received. PCA Mill for 2019 sixth grade class trip, $2,500. PCA Mill in memory of Derek White for hockey jerseys, $1,800. Minnesota Historical Society for fifth grade field trip transportation, $216. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on those? All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, whereas the resolution was declared adopted. Item two, approve the proposed certified 18 pay 19 levy at the maximum allowed amount. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Just so everyone's aware, this is common practice to, at least from our standpoint, certify the maximum. We want to go down in December, we can, but you can't go.
Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item three, set truth and taxation meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, December 17th, 2018, with formal certification of 18 pay 19 levy to occur after presentation and discussion. Motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just so if you're marking your calendar, we'll do our regular meeting at 5:00. If we happen to be down early, we have to wait till 6:00 to do that piece. If we go late, it'll just follow.
Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Administrative reports. What's the tape?
Our number, we're at 5:28 for 5:55. And we have coming up, elementary kids will be participating in the homecoming parade on Friday at 1:30 at elementary. And we have National Walk to School Day coming up on October 10th. And that is where we walk from Kerry Park to school to celebrate wellness and walking. The school year really has been off to a pretty smooth start at Falls Elementary this year. And I recently secured a Mr. Pete Foundation grant for $4,500 for preschool playgrounds, which is different, like, stencils for different games and things to be painted on the new asphalt at Falls Elementary School. So we're waiting for that to come in once that gets here, we'll get that going. And we're working with Pi on getting some motivational sayings on the bathroom stalls for kids, so that's what we have going on.
Thanks. Do you have a report for Tim?
Well, I'm in a district report about the same thing. We're off to a pretty decent start. A few little bumps or whatever, I'm gonna say district-wide as we started. But overall, pretty, I think, successful start. Things are up and rolling. A lot of, you know, a lot of positive feedback. Again, we're gonna take a quick walk around here. There's a lot of stuff done. Everything wasn't perfect technology-wise, but you know what? The group is pretty satisfied. Mike and Casey are both working, I think, very hard, getting some kinks out. We still have a few wrong extensions, I think, and they're working frontiers, working on that. I've gotten a couple of positive comments that I have passed on coming through Mrs.'s building. Like having extra, you know, support, I'm not saying Casey's there all the time, but it's going well. Yeah, so I think we're off to a good, I have some more other buying, but Tim's out for a while, so he's not really. He is helping here and there where he can. I have actually a phone call meeting with him tomorrow with three yards Stella's eyes. So starting to get in a little bit, walking back and forth, so hopefully sooner than later we'll have some relief. But Mark's doing an excellent job as well. Teaching staff has been great about helping out wherever possible. I think food service is off to a good start and some positive feedback in both buildings, trying some different things, so it's good.
All right, yourself?
Okay, in no specific order here. First of all, just some clarification. I did have a conversation with Chief Mastin to kind of, and it was actually this morning, feel out how they felt the no parking out front was going. And I have seen him having some conversations, a few with people, but overall, haven't seen a whole lot. He feels it's going well. They're educating. I'm not gonna say they haven't given any tickets. That's really not my info or not, but they were trying to educate. I did clarify, clarify with him that if a parent is coming to drop a kid off in the morning, you can pull over there, put it in park if that's what you need to do, let your kid out and move on. They will not have an issue with that. If someone's gonna sit there for 10 minutes waiting for a kid to come out or something, you better get on the other side of the street. So they're fine with, you know, parents pulling over, letting the kid or kids out and moving on. You know, that, they're not gonna consider that parking. So I think it's good. He was fine, and we'll keep working, but like he said, it is gonna be, you know, if they come by, there's a volleyball game tonight, and a vehicle's parked on this side, they're gonna enforce.
There was a learning period when we had buses going that way, too. People, they just, you know, be fine.
So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out, and if we can all help, like you say, continue educating people if they have questions, that's where it is. If someone stops, it comes inside, they got an issue if they come by, you know, that's. Heads up, and I, I guess many of you have seen, and I talked with Michelle a little bit on Friday, late afternoon Friday, I got approached by Lori Lyman at PCA about doing something to promote attendance at homecoming events. And they were looking for a way to reduce the cost or whatever, so I pulled some costs last year from homecoming football game, as well as a couple volleyball game, one or two volleyball games, and got a rough ballpark. Just so you're aware, we took in just over $2,000 last year from the football game. Plus, we paid two ticket takers, two ticket sellers. The volleyball game, I don't think we had one during homecoming week, so I pulled a different one. We took in about $800. Not saying that was a high or low. So with those two events, I didn't know what PCA was interested in. And I didn't, they were looking at giving us $500 or what, but she said in the ballpark of $2,000, committed to $2,000. So I asked Michelle, is there any reason we can't just do the two slash three events free? Because A, we're not paying people, this give or take, you know, obviously the volleyball, I think, is against Low Fork. Might be a little bigger night, but I think it's the right thing to do. They're interested in also doing, she's gotten a lot of positive PR, and like you say, cost-wise, we're gonna come out above the same. You know, maybe the Booster Club's will even make more money, you know what I'm saying? Which is a, they would also like to do something similar during winter sports week. And so that's where we're at. If someone, obviously I took with a little go for it from Michelle, you know, because we had to do it and get stuff in the paper and out, you know, couldn't wait until tonight. I think it's a great, I mean, even if PCA wasn't, maybe something we would wanna do, but they committed, and they're interested in doing something. So I think it's great. So any PR, and you know, and they're actually, they actually even printed, I didn't see them, I don't know if Missy got them today, that Mrs. Olson Line put the post out, "If you saw the purple," they printed that whole thing, actually, to send home with kids. I assume it's in color. So, I mean, great, in a great way, and I'll mention it on the radio tomorrow, of trying to promote good things in the community. You know, so that's where that came from. You see, and I'll talk about the QCOM goal in a little bit. I typed the three goals up, at least the way I see it. The QCOM goal was not available when I typed this, but for the most part, we don't need action. Is that what we settled on, three, kind of doing the academic goal, the LSI goal, and then lean out and about, if that's the right way of saying it? If we wanted to just look at that. I guess I used the year old direction or whatever. That's, like you say, I'll talk more about the academic goal in just a minute. It can be put in here.
I think it looks good.
Yeah.
Does three cap, I mean, is that kind of work?
I think three is enough.
Well, but that's what I'm getting at, not just specializing. I'll get to the ALC, in fact, I've been over there a few times now. I formally do, you know, but get in an Indian Head class or two, a special ed class or two, variety of places, and I will report back to you. Okay there, or?
Yeah, sounds good.
I got a question. I just wanna tell, unless someone has a, I got a question whether a year old picture could have a shotgun in it. I wanna say I brought this to the board last year, but I can't remember. There's a kid, kid, maybe even more than one, that, you know, part of the trap club, they're not like aiming the gun, so it looks like you're shooting. I don't have an issue, you know, that, that's.
That's a school.
Correct, it's a school, and are we, unless someone has, but I mean, it also, it could be anyone, I guess. I'm not gonna say you have to, well, but the thing is, we allow one, we kind of have to allow. But as long as it's in good taste, is what I told Mr. Anderson. He likes it, doesn't look like I'm, you know, shooting at you through, you know?
Or holding a rifle or something.
Holding a rifle or a shotgun or something like that.
It's only AR-15s.
Really, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, obviously, if you came in the front door, you saw we had some extracurricular activity out front last night, as well as has been in the community the last week, and there was at least one or two prior to school, or right as school started. And obviously, I get, I've got the heat in many different directions, and I'm just being honest with you. I personally do not like the activity. My biggest fear is that some kid will eventually get hurt, whether it's, you know, something on our property, whether it's running to get away, whether it's between, last night, or last night, they were out for pretty much 2:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the morning. Out here this weekend, I know it was in the same ballpark, 3:00 in the morning, and I got a text at 3:15 of a person, you know, that had our students in around their house. And I guess my concern is, you know, what is our stance? I don't wanna ruin something for everyone that not everyone's doing. I know, I will talk with Chief Mastin and Sheriff Hebner some more about it. I know in the past, you went up the ladder to the county attorney, and the judge would not do anything. But I guess some have said, we as a board should take a stance, because if we don't do something, it looks like you're doing it. I'm not saying that is correct. We don't have to make any choice right now, but it's something to think about. You know, one parent told me it's a rite of passage, and I've told that story in the past, it wasn't this year. But I just struggle, you know, that it's, it's one thing if it's each other's house, if we are students, we're doing it each other. Doing it on our property, to me, doesn't show pride to your school, but I can't guarantee it was our kids out here, but I don't think it was Low Fork or National Greenway coming up here and doing it last night. But I just want you aware that there's, there's a faction that think we should do more. And I guess I'm looking at, if, again, I'm all for it if we have the backing. You know, there's people in favor, there's people against, and what we do and how we do it is a whole nother question. You know, if we laid out, if there's any toilet paper in this year, we're not, you know, having the parade, we're not having the lawn fire, we're not having the homecoming dance. While if we don't catch someone in one house has toilet paper, the school's toilet paper, maybe just Low Fork kids. Or, you know, and I'm not trying to point them, I hope they wouldn't do it, but you gotta be willing to. Now, if we catch our own kids, or someone catches our kids, maybe that would be a different stance. But again, you're punishing all. But on the other hand, I will tell you, and of course, years back, we didn't have, you might only add 10, a lot of 12 in this building at one time. There were a lot of sixth graders, seventh graders thinking it was the coolest thing out front this morning. You know, and what I'm getting at is, I don't know how to stop that either. You know, we can talk to them, you know, and try getting a message, but, you know, where, I don't know how many of the elementary kids really, you know, maybe over the next week or two, we'll eventually see it. But there was a lot of giggling and, you know what I'm saying, that, hey, you know, it's new to them, you know? But that is a little bit of a concern, you know, and I don't, like I said, we just have to think about it. I don't think there's anything we can do right now, you know, other than, like I say, if we catch kids, it's a different story, but something to think about. This is not going on, I'm gonna say, for many, many years. And I will personally, like I say, have a talk with law enforcement, see if, you know, they have any more ideas. They haven't gotten anywhere in the last many years, but maybe at some point, someone will have a different stance. If kids are caught and they're in activities, we can do something. We would say it's academic governing of an athlete, they would sit two weeks, two games, or whatever their violation is. And I believe in that. Some, you know, but kids that aren't in activities, they can't put them in ISS. And you can't do an academic punishment for something outside of school.
They should at least get community service for the equivalent of cleaning it up, right? Even if it's around here, I would think. But, you know, if that's a rite of passage, so is getting caught. Getting in trouble for it too, right? Like, not everybody's got no way with it, throwing the whole pass. And I'm sure some people got in trouble for it from time to time. So, I mean, to me, where they get caught, that's the bare minimum that should happen, because they should have to. However long it took the custodians to clean it up, that's how much work that they have to at least put into it.
I don't disagree, but that has not been what has been pushed, you know, some parents have made, or.
I don't want them to ruin their lives or anything. They're gonna get, you know, vandalism fine, and, because, I mean, it is toilet paper, not spray paint. But they should, should at least have to cover that, I would say. That's my, I guess that's my reason.
But you can imagine how long this is gonna be a mess, you know, and every time you go to mow, now.
You drive by somebody's houses from last year and still see them.
Correct. Yeah.
Can we do that, implement community service? That was my idea as well.
Well, we need, we need the city and counties' help. If, if kids are caught, they're gonna have to enforce, because we as a school can't force kids to go do community service or even force them to work here.
Well, but you can force people to have detention, right?
But, but you can't do, again, it happened outside the school day. So unless, now, like, if they're attending a hockey game and something happens, I can't put them in ISS. I can do a no trespass or some, you know, if they're drinking or something like that, that's a law we can have enforced. But you can't punish academically for something that doesn't happen. When I say punish is putting in ISS or serve detention. You can't do that unless it happens. You can't do that unless it happens in a school function. Just because it happens on school grounds outside the school day, I'm really limited. Other than, you know, putting a no trespass, not allowing them to come to extracurricular activities, you know, that would be a possibility, and that could even mean you can't play. I mean, seriously, you know, I mean, that could be a, the board would want to go there someday, that if you're caught doing, you're done in 12 months. I mean, that, that would be serious, you know, and...
Did we get it out here last year?
We've got it out front for several years and I, I won't say anymore.
Because the TP squad, from what I hear from my kids, you get on the TP squad and they do each other's, juniors and seniors do each other's houses, but I kind of feel like maybe it's not really, they're not sticking to the rules.
They've done the school, I can't, I can't do last four year, oh, it's been...
All left.
It's been many years.
Teacher got it this weekend.
What's that?
I heard that. Yeah. And that, to me, is just, that's so wrong.
We don't condone it at all as teachers.
No, it's, I feel it's very disrespectful.
There's a lot of teachers that get it, yeah.
So anyway...
I'm just, I'm just waiting for, some has been getting hurt, because some teachers have advanced adult motion detectors, so they, they're trying to catch them, and I'm sure there's somebody getting hurt running away, driving away.
I know this was a long time ago, but for past, past '97, there was a kid that broke his leg.
Oh, I think I'm going to talk about the other story. I remember a guy chasing another kid.
Yeah, I mean...
So anyway, think about it. I don't have an answer, but if we want to do something, we need to come to, you know, have some discussion and come up with...
Whatever is within our limits, I would say, I mean, we're not condoning it, that's for sure.
Can we talk to the local enforcement, see if we can get a standard that, and maybe a time offer next year? I'd really like to see the community service at least, so they can see the work that gets put into figuring that crap up.
Let me have some more conversation and see if we'll get any support.
Or for every day that the toilet paper's still in front of the school, they can roll it around.
The last thing I have, and I'll try walking through, I should, did everyone get a copy? I set a packet, I think, next to the... Oh, you got, oh, you got it. Everyone get a copy of?
Yep.
If anyone else wants a copy, there's a few on display here and I can provide to anyone. For the most part, I just want to walk you through the first page, okay? If you recall, I'm thinking it ended up being about November last year, we had to, we had to change our QCOM goal, if you recall, we could no longer do the percent of students that met or exceeded and improved. So we had to go to this Z score. So I'm just showing you, we had this document before, but, so right here was, make sure I got the right one, yeah. So in 2017, 1615, they gave us our Z scores for a district. Now, keep in mind, I'm just trying to go do this, a Z score goes from 1 to negative 1, okay? It's not a percentage, okay? So if, if a student had a Z score of 0, that really means they didn't improve more, you know, they moved a year's growth, but they didn't go any more, they didn't go any less. So if a kid got a positive Z score, they made more than the year's growth. If they got a negative, they made less than a year's growth, okay? So, now, this is the average, this is for the whole district, okay? In math, our Z score was negative .17, I'm just, okay, 174. This year now, our, is a negative .1439. So we actually made improvement. We're not as negative, if that makes sense. Falls High School, now this is just for math, in 17 was negative .1363, is now negative .1565. So it went down a little bit. You with me? Okay? Falls Elementary in math was negative .2553 in 17. It went up to negative .1175. Made some good growth, okay? Following how this is going? Okay, I'm going to go down the reading, I'm skipping the rest here. If we go down here, so in 2017, as a district, we were at point, negative .0787. We're now at negative .049. So again, we made some growth, we're just not out of, we're still going negative, if you will. Falls High School was at negative .0378, now at negative .0244, so they made a little bit of growth. And the elementary was at negative .1676, is now at negative .1058, okay? For the most part, okay, if you recall, we'd never dealt with Z scores before, and again, I can't calculate it for you because it takes into account the number of year average and how accurate questions are and standard deviation and a variety of things. So we didn't know, we set a QCOM goal of .05 growth. That's not 5%, that's just a .05 Z score growth. The state really not saying if that was good, bad, or indifferent, fine, you know, well, because you really don't know. So we started looking at, you know, again, averages over on the right-hand side, you know, not quite sure, okay? So the elementary math reading made their goal. The district did not make either goal, because we didn't make .05 Z score growth. We made growth, which is a good thing. And the high school did not make, okay? They had one that grew, one that went down a little bit. There was growth though, that's a good thing. Also, if you notice, I put the meet and exceed in here, it's in this box. If you notice, and I think it might be the first time in, I can't say forever, but a long time, state in math was 57% meet or exceed, the district's at 61.4, okay? We're above the state average in meet or exceed. As well as down here in reading, 59.8, just barely, but we're at 60.2. Good, you know, and the tough part is, again, and I'm speaking for John's group, as well as with John's group, only one group, meaning the elementary teachers made, not district goals, but made the site goals, there was growth, and that's, that's a tough thing. And we're actually above the state average, and if you just use meet and exceed, it's tough not giving some of them, you know, the paint. We did refine our, if you go to the second page, I just want to show you some, because we're still struggling, not that people are entitled to the money, but it's a couple of years now, some of them have not achieved the goal, and you start losing motivation. Not that they're not working hard, but we started looking at the change. So right here, that's what this is, differences. So there, the district went up .03 last year, Z score, this isn't percent. Year before is .466, a lot. But yet the 16, 15, 16, maybe a little dyslexia there, the way I'm writing those numbers, we went down negative .53, I mean, it's, it's all across the board. Start looking at an average, five-year average of Z scores, you know, the actual difference, .045, .067, .006. Still not really narrowing in on what, you know, a good target would be. We went down to .025 for Z score growth this year, okay? That's what we wrote in the elementary and high school plan. We've had years we've made great Z score growth, other years that have had horrible negative, you know, I, again, I think a lot of it, as much as you try and try and try, there's groups, when you compare one year to the next, that are higher, you know, so again, I, I guess I'm, there hasn't been a report in the paper, you know, as far as when the test results were released, I was expecting something. I think we did okay, you know, as much as I would have liked, you know, because that money, quote unquote, is not ours, you know. Two-thirds comes from the state and a third from local tax payer, and hopefully it isn't sent up and pushed, and I think people are trying, it's just we haven't been quite there. So the last, the last pages are actually the copy of the official plan or, you know, that we have to update. And like I say, unless the board has an issue with what we're trying, like I say, I don't know what, the state has to approve it, so we'll see what they have to say. We talked about looking at different options, but we chose, at least for time, the state using their Z score calculation and his student growth, which we believe in. And again, you can't have a negative, I said, there's no, you know, and I don't know if .025 is, you know, it seems too bold, but it's just we haven't done it long enough. If we're doing .01 and we're making it every year, which isn't a bad thing, but you might go, we pushing hard now. But I think we pushed and tried a lot of things, some have gotten a little bit of pain right now, so we dropped. Unless someone asks questions, I can clarify, that is all I have at this point.
All right, let's not hear, any?
Oh, one other, sorry, I had one more thing that just came to me. As we are recorded here, Carol Jacksaw, part of the KCC crew, I don't know, volunteers, brought an interesting sheet in here, and she was going to the, I think, the city council meeting to per, um, report, but they taped, and this goes out on the TV, but it also goes out on YouTube, and you can do searches for, well, ISD 361 over the last five meetings, pushing 5,000 YouTube. Now, these are, you know, it came up in a search, someone clicked, is the way I understand. Doesn't mean it's the highest of any group whatsoever, and I, again, whether they're coming up in searches and people are watching the whole thing, but I'm sure someone is watching, so it's highest by far of any of the things early recorded.
I think that's pretty entertaining.
I think they tell some hard jokes.
So anyway, people are interested.
Yeah, I'm interested, huh?
So...
Good deal.
How about the sewer board, how would they do?
You can look up the numbers there.
That's the one they caught popcorn and watch that, Captain. That's a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any committee reports?
The way that the month fell, there, unless I missed it, there wasn't a rec. committee in between the two, so I...
Okay, anything else?
I was able to secure a Mr. Pete grant for some motivational sayings for the bathroom as well, Finn and I have been working together, so they're in there.
Anything else? I guess would this be the spot, you know, because we keep talking about the community ed and the monthly updates, would this be where we would get an update on what's been happening? Like we talked about, classes are going on, attendees, all that kind of stuff, would that be where that would be?
I would say it would be...
Who, and is Rachel the one that would be responsible for reporting that?
Well, Heather or I could too, if you want to report on that every month.
But they need quarterly, right? So it'd probably be on a quarterly basis, whether it was from...
But she just has to run a report, right?
Well, she's going to have to generate a report. I don't know how, to be, I'm just being honest, I don't know how they keep track of each event, whether it's on a spreadsheet or, yeah.
I guess I think a monthly report's probably a little better venue, just for us to see how things are going month by month and see what's going on, rather than just quarterly.
Let me see what I can start getting from...
If she can provide that to you for the meeting.
Perfect, yeah.
Anything else? Could I get a motion to tour the school buildings? A second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye.